But they took all of our pictures and you weren't there. What did you think of that wall? achievement days maybe, I don't remember. It is 8:30 and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would extend an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anyone that wants to put anything on the agenda? Nobody being present. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We have a motion?
Move approval.
Does anyone have any additions for the agenda? If not, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. And today on the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the human services report. Would we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Does anyone have anything to add or delete from the consent agenda?
This morning, I handed out three additional travel and education requests. One was for those of us that attended the chamber luncheon yesterday. The other one was for yesterday for Bob or Richard to attend a meeting in Mitchell. And then there's one coming up next week for Misty. And that one got printed front to back. So the information on that is actually on the backside of that. But a vegetation management seminar coming up next week.
So we'll add those items to the consent agenda. Anybody else have any additions or subtractions to the consent agenda? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Or excuse me. Now, each of the items that are on the consent agenda with the additions that Stacy just mentioned.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to routine business and approval of claims.
Second.
Commission have any comments about claims? Questions? Anything from you Stacy or Vicki? All in favor? We're going to do a roll call vote here. Sorry, Gemma.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to start our department head reports. And Dick, let's start with you.
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot. I wanted to report on the bid letting for our two bridges on 77 South. The low bidder was Pron Construction. And they were bidding $3,056,597.05. And there were four, five bidders. And the high bid was $4,254,993. So that's right in the ballpark of the engineer's estimate was $3,176,828. So we're kind of on track for that. We're still waiting on the weather and little lower water levels to do our small structures. And we are about maybe a week to a week and a half to where we won't get them done this fall. We'll have to do them in the spring. It's just getting too frozen and the water doesn't seem to dissipate. Also, I forgot to mention at last meeting that the Hyrum Department has gone to their winter hours now. So we're there from 7:00 to 3:30. The bridge inspections are done and the report and everything's been sent to the state. So I invited Banner to come on December 18th's meeting. And I believe Stacy is planning on putting that on the agenda. So hopefully, we will have abundance of information. And also, they'll be able to answer any questions you might have. And other than that, I don't have anything unless you have some questions. The weather, of course, over the weekend was not the best, but it's winter.
The small structures are, are they still open? I mean, they're still open for traffic and that kind of stuff or?
Absolutely, yes. Nothing's been disturbed.
Right, so if we can't get in there and get it done, we're not going to start and not finish type of thing. It's either we're going to get in there and get it done or wait till spring.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
The two bridges south of town, construction date was still April or March?
March.
March start date? And then they have 18 months?
No, I think they want it done by the end of November.
Okay, so.
I think it's a pretty short window.
It's a short window. Do we know if they're closing the intersection of the Campbell Road to 77? That one bridge is right on that corner?
No, I don't know. I forgot about that. I'll have to find that out.
Just let me know if you find out if they're going to make some concession there to get cars through there or if they're just going to block it off and they've got to go all the way around.
Okay, I'll do that. I'm sorry, I forgot all about that.
Would you spell the name of the entity that got the bid? And have they done work for us before?
They did the gun range bridge a couple, three years ago. Did a real nice job, very easy to work with. They do a lot of bridges. They're out of slate in Minnesota. So I think they'll be a good group to have on hand.
And how many small structures are not done that we were going to do this year?
Two.
Two?
The one a mile and a half south of Sinai on 11 and the one straight west to Bruce on the intersection of 4 and 5.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
And the other thing is the boxes are built and we paid for them. So I mean, they're ready to go anytime, so it won't be a very long delay, so.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Morning.
Morning.
I don't have a lot, a lot today, but yeah, the snow kept us busy between the Highway Patrol and my staff. They had, well, I think my staff took care of 30 either slide-ins or accidents. They weren't all accidents, a lot of them were slide-ins and so forth. And then the Highway Patrol had their share too, so there's quite a few out there. We had plenty to go around, but nobody got hurt. That's the main thing. I have 34 in jail. And if you notice, I know I give you a lot of information. You probably don't want all of that, but it's on the sheet. And so you just look at what you want to and whatever. But the average inmate day for the year so far has been 30.4, which is down 11 from last year. So I think last year, our daily average was 41. So it's been, but the ones that have been jailed need to be in jail. I only have three on work release. And also, you know, I used to have 10, 15 on work release out of the jail and so forth. So, you know, the numbers have been easy to work with. I still struggle a little bit with classification. My busiest area yet is 24/7. The PBTs are down, but the UAs, you know, that's 66, UAs that come in twice a week. And now they want to start the HOPE probation, which will add another 20 maybe. So 24/7 stays busy. Now, we have a meeting at 10 o'clock today to talk about the HOPE probation, which they want to start after the first of the year. But in Brown County and in Connington County, court services are doing the UAs during the week and the sheriff's office is doing it on the weekend. And that's basically what I want to say now. You know, these programs are all good too, but someone, you know, there's a lot of work to these programs too. So we'll see how, but, so in that area, it stays busy for us. You know, right now, we only have 40, well, we have 46 PBTs, which is down. So that kind of helps out that it comes twice a day. So, but I do have a four-hour person that comes in and helps with 24/7 and that comes out of the 24/7 budget. So it's not out of the, out of my budget or the general fund budget and so forth. So other than that, I had a late travel request in there with my singing deputy that we hired a year or so ago. He was asked to come to sing the National Anthem at the academy for the graduating class of the new police officers and deputies. So I sent him down there to sing. So anyway, may I have him come in and sing the National Anthem for you someday? Anyway, other than that, I have, I haven't, don't have anything else.
I just have a quick question. First of all, I appreciate getting all the information on the report. So that's great and would like you to keep doing that, okay? But when we look at the number of violation reports per year, those statistics, are they up for 2018 so much because more arrests, more people on, on some type of reporting in? Or what's the deal with that?
Probably a lot of it has to do with just a little more aggressive, aggressive police. The overtime, you know, for working drugs and underage consumption and those things. And it's just, I got a DRE officer that is making, you know, some arrests on someone that's, you know, drug driving and so forth that we didn't have before, so.
Anybody else have a question?
Marty, for the viewing public, would you explain the HOPE probation?
You know, I don't know if Michael can help me out on this. I don't know that much about it. Basically, what HOPE probation is, is that the ones that don't qualify for drug court will go into that HOPE, into that HOPE area. And it's, it's not as intensive as, as drug court, but they're still more structured. So we can get those ones that, you know, are on the methamphetamine and try to get them off. But they don't qualify yet for the more intensive. So it's a little less structure in it. But there is still structure that someone watches these. What they do, they sign them numbers and then they, they, or I should say, they sign them a color. And they got to call in, I don't know every, I don't know if they call in every day or every other day or whatever. And let's say their color is blue and then they say you have to come in and do a UA test that day to keep them, to keep them clean and so forth. But there's still, there's still structure to it, but not as intense as, as drug court, if that makes sense.
If I may, I think that's a fairly descriptive and accurate statement.
Thank you, Michael. The other thing is SDSU now, since they're winning, they have, it was last year too, they may have two more games in December, so we're not quite done yet. But one, one for sure, and we may have another game in December yet at SDSU. I still have deputies that are helping out there. And of course, Athletic pays us for that back and so forth. Last year, we didn't get the check until after the first of the year. We didn't get it in on the, on the current year. But last year was like $9,800, you know, so. But my budget is able to handle that. Stacy's really good when she does my personnel budget, sees what I spent last year and she keeps it about because she knows I got a lot of overtime and things like that. But a lot of that overtime comes in on federal overtime and, and those programs and stuff. I know it shows that I have a lot of overtime, but a lot of it's paid back. So I was going to mention one other thing too. Can't remember what it was now. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. On the very back page, it's a little confusing. The very back page is trying to keep track of more of what my school resource officer is doing. It's probably not super accurate because I know he's doing more presentations than it indicates, but he's staying busy. He's staying busy in those schools. You know, the first week of school, we had truancy already and not coming to, coming to school. And we've had a lot of school disruptions with students. And it just seems like every day, it's something in one of the schools that's going on. So we just have a lot of issues in the school. And with that school resource officer in there, that really helps free up my patrol guy. You know, otherwise, my patrol guy would be in there and I wouldn't have anybody out patrolling and so forth. So it's really been an asset to put him in there. And he's staying busy. I don't think he realized how busy he was. He's, he's always telling me he's about six reports behind. And we did put docking stations in the three schools and they gave him, all three schools gave him office space so he can do his reports while he's at school. And he's available if kids want to come in and visit with him and so forth. So, but he's staying busy, staying busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki?
Good morning. I think we've been together the end of a roll there. You should have received your finance officer's report. And it's the be it noted items are the auditor's account with the treasure payroll and additives, total highway expenditure report and the register of deeds statement of fees. And then we have the fourth quarter transfers for highway of $750,000 and emergency management of $18,517.75. And in the report, it showed that we have surplus cash of 50.91%. But if we take away the transfers, that brings it down to about 43, 44%.
I hope you feel better than you sound.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we dealt with the be it noted items. And then we need action to approve the fourth quarter transfers. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote on that.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Kristen? Stacy, will you address that 44% when we get to your stuff? I'd like to talk a little bit about that.
Well, good morning. I actually have a voice, but it's not great. I think if you go over there, we're hand sanitizing and spraying misting because every one of us have this. So I'm going to be. It's contagious, right? So every one of us have this, but I'm going to just go over a couple of things. We do have our two new employees and they are trained in. So that's been relieving a lot of pressure, which is great because I wasn't there for two days last week as I didn't want to share this so far. Only one of my employees has caught what I'm sharing. So we did have the local emergency planning meeting out at the facility last week. Everything I've heard has been positive. And I'm sure you'll discuss that later, Commissioner Pierce. But I wasn't able to be there. I didn't want to share everything that I have going on. We did, I attended the chamber luncheon with Stacy yesterday. She was nice enough to invite me. We have tag for a can going on right now where people can come in and do archery tag as long as they bring in a canned food donation for the food pantry. We also, of course, did our pumpkin chucking on Sunday, which I'm sure didn't help the fact I was starting to feel better and now I'm definitely not feeling better. But that was a huge hit. We've actually had people email and write in asking us to do it again next year. We'll definitely try and do it before the pumpkins are hard as rocks. That will help us out tremendously. But we had people, we had a family who built their own chucking device. And of course, we built a giant slingshot. And I think the employees had more fun building that giant slingshot than anything else. And we have had a couple of people ask us about lighting in the parking lot, which I'll bring up at the advisory board meeting, maybe putting in some motion lights at night, especially right at 5 o'clock. It's getting extremely dark out there. And we had not only Joe add, but a couple of members bring up how dark that one corner is for parking. And so that's something we'll kind of go through later. But just wanted, if you guys get any questions or people of the public asking, just let them know that we are going to discuss that and kind of go through that and see what options are. So that way, if you guys get anybody asking you about it, we're already addressing it.
Kristen, one question you may want to do research with the city on their zoning regulations of those lights because that was something that was an issue with our zoning there is lights have to go a certain direction. So they can't protrude out from the building is my understanding. They allowed us to light those signs on one side, but not the other. And so you need to check with them because they may not allow a light on the building to shoot out to the parking lot in that zoning, so.
This morning, I did talk to the parking director and they're checking into the, the street light that is out in the middle. It was off that night. How that is actually where the electricity comes from and if it's got a separate meter. That would, that would have helped quite a bit if that would have been on that night too. So I checked into it. They'll be getting back to, so.
One of the other things potentially is on the building itself to have a motion light that would go out. I park where it's roped off right there. And maybe, and I'll check with zoning, if there's a motion light we could even put out there?
That's, but my understanding was certain directions you cannot point the lights out. So before you do all the research on different lights that are available, what to do, you might want to check downstairs to see what's allowable.
I would not even have thought of zoning, so thank you for, for letting me know on that. Other than that, any questions? Or did you guys hear anything about the pumpkin chucking? Positive, negative?
Haven't heard anything.
I was out there, everybody was having a great time. It was kind of fun. We even let like younger kids help chuck using the, the slingshot. And they were just, we have tons of video, we have drone footage. So we'll be putting all that together into promotional video. Thank you.
Bob?
Good morning. We had our planning meeting on November the 6th and had several plats and everything. That went well. Our PPC, PPC pod meeting was conducted at the hospital on November the 8th. That was a, it was an after-action review of the September 30th full-scale exercise. And of course, full-scale exercise, we gave over 800 shots to students over at South Dakota State University. So the PPCC meeting went well. I was on vacation from November 6th to November 9th down in Chicago. And obviously, I caught something that I brought back with me. November 13th, I had my office manager, Ray Lynn Maher. She attended the Ball Ridge 101 workshop leadership training. I had signed up for it. And with three people in the office, two of us got sick or ill and she ended up doing it. And she said it was a good course for her. And I have no, no issue sending people to training like that. November 14th to 16th, I was in Pennsylvania on a US Department of Transportation sponsored trip. That went well. The, on November 15th, our local emergency planning committee did meet at the Brookings Outdoor Adventure Center. We had a nice tour of the facility. And it's been recommended that we use it in the future. And we have no, no issue with that. The biggest issue with the local emergency planning committee is it is one of those state grant driven through the EPA. And we do provide meals to them. And sometimes the issue is how many people show up? No matter how many times you have someone RSVP, you either don't have enough food or you have too much food. And that's just an issue we have to work out internally. And, but it was a good meeting, I think, well, well-received. And we'll keep using the facility as needed. And November 16th, I came back. Soon as I landed in Sioux Falls, I went up to the truck stop and attended a one-hour telephone call with the, it was a federal government part of, that discussed permitting pipelines. And they was, they had a session. They wanted the input from the Midwest and I represented North Dakota and South Dakota. And basically, I told them how we permitted the basin electric power cooperative Deer Creek Station over there near White. I just sat in my van and, and they had, most of the issues are on the, on the east coast where they have permitting through large populated areas. Of course, we don't have a large populated area anywhere in the county. And ours went well, well, and how the feds came out and they had their scoping meetings in the city of White and city of Brookings. And it's so much different on how we do things locally than they do over, over on the coast. Yesterday, we had a meeting with LG Everest. They came up and showed us their future grading plan for the, for the operation over here on the, where their most recent mining permit is. And they've got that all settled down. They're using, using the latest guidelines that we gave to them. And I also presented that plan down to the city development office. Today, later today, over at the Brookings County Emergency Operations Center, I have the Army ROTC, the lieutenant colonel in charge there. He's bringing over his staff, his students to show, to get a brief on civil military operations. Some of you may not have been around long enough. Such as when the Missouri River dams flooded back in 2011, I think it was. There you had a lot of, lot of military, mostly National Guard, working with the, with civilian population. And they just want to get a class from the ROTC level on why does it take for, for National Guard or the military to work with civil authorities? And the biggest issue is going to be, to be a liaison officer at our level. The most we would see would be somebody in uniform in our emergency operations center. They'd be the liaison officer. We'd tell them what we need and then they'd send the message out to the, to the military people. And we would never actually be shoulder to shoulder more than likely with the, with the military. It's that we would use them in, in our support. And that's all driven through the state of South Dakota and the, and the state emergency operations center. It's all well within our local emergency operations plans. And, and we've got the, we've got the procedures in place. We just, and this class is just to show them what the procedures are and a chance to see a local emergency operations center and how it's set up, so. And on November 6th, it's getting to be Blizzard time. We do have a Blizzard, Blizzard meeting in Mitchell. We have Department of Transportation, Office of Emergency Management and the South Dakota Highway Patrol. We all get together and we start talking about what our plans are for the wintertime. I'll be sending my deputy director over there since I will be on a NACO Board of Directors meeting in a warmer place than this. November 30th, there is a CAFO forum in Mitchell, South Dakota. I do have a travel request in. The travel request has both mine and my deputy's name on it, but only one of us will be gone. If, if I'm physically able, I'll be the one in attendance. If I'm not able, then we'll switch up names and shoot him over there. But this was an invitation received in the mail. So we went ahead and after talking to my liaison, we will accept the invitation and go over and see it. And during the last bad weather, the, I was actually in bed sick as a dog, but the weather service called me and went and asked me if it was starting to ice over. And I said, well, I don't know. So I walked outside and noticed it was starting to ice over. And I called the dispatch center to see if they needed any help with sheltering or anything. And they said at that time, we, we didn't have an issue. There was a lot of sliding, slipping and sliding, but there was no, no shutting down of anything and no need for sheltering assistance at that time. So, any questions?
Just, I wanted to make a comment for everybody else that's on the commission here that the POD, that's the point of distribution in case there would be a requirement for mass scale inoculations in the county. And this exercise, we had 800 flu vaccines. And we did run out of vaccine. So we had to send a van, or a van came down from, I should maybe say it that way, from Watertown to provide the additional vaccine that would be needed. And that was written up as a weak point in the, in the after-exercise evaluation. But as one of the members of our. But as one of the members of our, our county health department, I can't think of the right name, what, what she said is that this was really very helpful because in, if we actually needed to be inoculating all these people, we ran out of vaccine, we actually had an experience on how we get more and, and get it to where we need to be. The, the whole thing went really well. I was a little surprised on how long it took people. It took about 30 minutes for somebody to get through the whole process. If we had to do the whole town, the whole county, there'd be, that kind of time period would be difficult. But those are all things that the exercise is designed to deal with, and then you'll work on it later. But that was a really good event. Anybody have any questions for Bob about that? Because I don't think we've done a large scale of that type for quite a while.
Well, not, not quite a while, but about every, every two or three years we do one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pierce, I just want to note, we are having some difficulties with our broadcast, our TV broadcast today. Sean, I know, has been in contact with SwifTal and CTI. And things look okay on our end, but it doesn't look like the TV feed is getting out. So he's working on it. But just if you get questions, we're aware of it. But it may or may not. We're really not sure. We don't think it is, but.
Thank you.
Yes, technology.
Okay. Moving on to scheduled agenda items, and I don't think we had any, anything set for a particular time. And we'll move on to regular business. Item number A, an action to approve resolution 18-45, a plat of Lot 12A Block 1 Sunset Point Edition of Section 22 Township 112 North, Range 47 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Would we have a motion?
Move approval.
And Richard, do you want to tell us about this?
Yes, this is a plat up to Lake Hendricks. They're replating it. It was originally platted back in 2008, I believe. Then they went back in and unplatted them into one large lot. And now they're, the lots are being sold. So they're replating them back into the original size. And that's what this plat is. So.
Anyone have any questions? It passed unanimously at planning and zoning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B, action to approve resolution 18-46, a plat of Lot 1 of Lot 47, Elmar Lake Hendricks, addition to the county of Brookings and Government Lot 5 of Section 21 Township 112 North, Range 47 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Richard?
Yes, this is also up at Lake Hendricks. They're combining two lots into one large lot. So they don't have any setback issues between the lot lines. So it meets the plating requirements.
And again, this passed unanimously with in front of planning and zoning commission. Any questions from anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, action to approve resolution 18-47, a plat of Blocks 1 and 2 of Lot H-1 in the northeast quarter, Section 1 Township 112, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Richard?
Yes, this is on the county road north of Bruce, up on the Hamlin, Brookings County line, correcting a property issue, line issue, or plating the H lots out of there and just getting the ownership corrected on that.
Anyone have any questions? And again, that passed unanimously in front of planning and zoning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item D, action to approve resolution 18-48, a bridge improvement grant program resolution, authorizing submission of applications for structure number 06-112-080.
Move approval. Second.
Dick, would you like to add anything?
These are just the ones we were planning on for submitting for the 2019 year. And it just has, covers our bridge south and west of Bruce that we did a little bit on Highway 6 that we did a year or so ago. And this will finish that off to put it up to very good standards.
Any questions?
Is there something we were going to talk about the match? I mean, it was in, is this where you want to do that?
I don't know. 20% match. Did we already do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's approved, it's approved for that and everything like that. Does this count against our $4 million of our, our bridge stuff? Does that max, do these max us out?
Or? No, no, this will, this will be part of it with the other 147, 200 that gets us within like $541,000 of being maxed out.
Okay. So we still got a little room there for, for that. All right.
Right. And hopefully we'll address that at December 18th meeting when, when I have Banner here and we've got a strategy and money available and stuff.
Okay.
And we'll have a roll call vote on this one.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action to approve agreement 18-101, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Preliminary Engineering, State Administration for Structure Number 06-153-200.
Second.
Dick?
Yes, this is the, we're doing the preliminary engineering on that 153-200. And the reason for this agreement is this year they moved up the application deadline, if you remember, for preliminary engineering ones to the middle of August. Well, we, the board approved a resolution to apply for that. But now, since it's been awarded already, we have to make an agreement to choose the engineering firm to do this preliminary engineering. So it's just the second normal step involved. And when we, after we get awarded, that's the first thing we do is choose a engineering firm off their list. So that's what this does.
Any questions for Dick?
And I guess I would recommend choosing Banner because they're on the list and that's who we've usually gone with.
We'll do a roll.
Do you need that as part of the motion to select better?
You don't, you don't need that as part of the motion. I guess I would just, for your information, that's.
Any other questions? We'll do a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action to approve agreement number 18-102, a letter of agreement between Brookings County and First District Association of Governments to assist with updating the county's hazmat plan. Do we have a motion? Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Hill?
Good morning. Yeah, this is an agreement. We've been here in the past on our pre-disaster mitigation plan. This happens to be the hazardous materials plan. This is done through the Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, known as PHMSA. And they, it's part of a mitigation type grant that allows us to excuse me, update our hazardous materials plan every five years. And it's time for updating. I'd recommend approval.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to send the whole county home. Did you want to say something, Dick?
Yeah, I was just going to say if, as Stacy was scrolling through that, that thing from the, the agreement with the DOT, I thought it would be interesting if, if you as a board wanted to see all the criteria that both the engineering firm and us do to meet that agreement thing to tell how we're going to go about it and what's involved. So that's the main reason I put it on the agenda.
Thank you. I did review that and it was kind of in depth.
It was, yes.
Item G, action to approve agreement 18-103, a state of South Dakota consultant contract, provision of community health services between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Family and Community Health Child and Family Services.
So move. Second.
Stacy, is this the exact same contract from last year?
It is. There is one change though. They did increase the state salary with, along with the state salary policy, they did increase the amount 1.2%. So $124. But the other verbiage that we've added over the years was, it remains in this contract. So.
And I only ask this, and I don't know if the state's attorney's office had an opportunity to review the contract. The, in the header at the top, Brookings County is called county and, and the department of health is called state. And then down in item number D, everything talks about consultant and nowhere in the header does it say who the consultant is. And I just think probably this, this contract maybe just goes on year after year and it never gets cleaned up. And probably it needs a look see to have some of that fixed. And I think last year, Stacy, we may have had this conversation when this came in front of us. The, the insurance requirement that's in here, we meet that, we have that insurance. Is that our, our normal policy? Or do we have a separate policy for that?
No, this would fall under just our general liability insurance. We don't have a separate policy for this.
And I have a concern that I'd like to go back to the state's attorney's office on regarding this contract, in that when you look at the section that talks, section E, and it talks about county agrees to indemnify and hold the state of South Dakota harmless from liability, I think there should be a provision in there that says to the limit of our insurance. Because if you, our sovereign immunity takes care of the issue of liability outside of what we have for insurance, but this doesn't make it clear in how this is written. And I just think maybe that needs to have a little cleanup. Do we need to have this done today? Or is this something that maybe the state's attorney could take back, take a look at, do a little fixing on?
Do you know, Vicky, does this take place, starts right? I think it's January 1.
Is that something that needs to be spelled out though? I mean, if?
I think it needs to be spelled out the way that it, the way that that is written. And I don't mean to put you on the spot because I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at it. But I think that that liability provision gives the state everything, the county nothing, and makes us assume all liability, even though, so if there, there is an issue that's arising solely from the acts or admission of the state, then we don't have any liability. But let's say it's one of our workers and a nurse, then we're responsible for everything. I just, I'm, I'm a little, I don't think we've ever had our insurer look at the wording on that.
If I, if I may, to answer your first question, no, I have not looked at this contract. But I do agree that, first of all, with the wording, the wording does need to be consistent throughout the contract. But as far as the indemnification clause, yes, I think it would be a good idea to have the insurer look at it, just so everybody is on the same page.
And I just want to be sure that it's in compliance with us retaining our sovereign immunity and not agreeing to pay more than we should have to.
Can this be done before our next agenda then? In December? So we got it finished?
Yes.
Are you going to have to send it back to the state for their approval?
I, I think that the state's attorney could come up with some wording. It could go to the state before our next meeting. They could look at it and say, yeah, that's okay, or it's not. But I'm, I don't think we've really done a lot of review on this agreement, except for we added the evaluation supervision language last time. Would that be satisfactory to everybody if we, do we need to table this then? Or, because we have a motion, right?
Yes, I would then table it to a specific date.
Is our meeting the 6th? Fourth? Would we have a motion to table?
Is that enough time?
With the holiday, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm thinking the second meeting in December, if we table it till then would be more appropriate. Make a motion to table till December 18th.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then maybe Stacy, you could be the person that would reach out to our insurer and ask those questions.
Yeah, I can take a copy of this and send it on to our insurance and see what they say. And I'll just point out item E or?
And I guess the question I have is, we're not the only county that has this insurer.
This is statewide contract.
They should have some standard language. Yeah. They'll know the answer to the question. Item H, action to approve a request to fill vacancy in the register of deeds office? Move approval. Any comments? Stacy, anything to add?
No, you kind of gave preliminary approval to start the, the advertising process on this position already. And that is underway. And we have, I think, almost 100 applications for this already. So.
Oh my gosh.
Some decisions, we'll have some work to do to get through that. So yes, but yes, so it's underway. So this is just kind of the paperwork to get that finalized.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item I, approval of board appointments. Would we have a motion to appoint Stephanie Miller, who can run but not hide? As our representative on the First District Planning Board?
So moved.
I guess I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And would we have a motion to appoint Steve Olson? And I, if I recall correctly, he already has been serving on the weed and pest board. Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And thank you, Commissioner Miller, for your willingness to do that. Next, the commission department director report.
The first thing that Vicky had noted earlier was our surplus cash analysis for October, month and October. Believe that is in here. Let's look at the comps. So it is at 51, about 51% right now. As Vicky had mentioned, if you take the transfers that were approved earlier, if you took those out, even though they weren't out at end of month October, because they're going to be done now in November. But if you took those out, we'd be at 43 and a half percent, which kind of puts us more right in line where we typically are in October. So, but that will be reflected in our November cash analysis. So we will be taking a look at this as we get closer to year end. Vicky and I haven't had a chance to yet. And now with the holidays, probably, probably looking at next week, start going through budgets. But we'll be watching this because we have to be under that 40% at year end. So if there's some opportunities there to, you know, possibly set, do some designations of cash at year end to get us underneath that, we will be looking at that and coming up with recommendations for that.
Will we be discussing that then at our December 4th meeting?
I don't know if it will be December 4th, but it'll be either the 18th or maybe the 18th discuss. And then on the 27th, we have that last kind of year end wrap up meeting and then take action at that point.
And that's soon enough to meet the state statute?
It just has to be before December 31st. Yes. Action taken in this calendar year. The, I've attended, I've been kind of out and about the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. I did attend the safety and risk management conference. And my report has a description of what, what all I went to there. That was a, a very, a very good conference this year. Every other year, they combine that. Usually it's just kind of local entities. And then, then every other year, they combine it with state entities. Usually it's just kind of local entities and then, then every other year, they combine it with state entities. And when they do that, they can, they bring in some different speakers, have a little more money to work with and have some bigger speakers. And at the end, and we had, the closing session was with Dr. Beck Weathers. And if you've seen the movie Everest or read the book Into Thin Air, he was one of a group of people that tried to climb Mount Everest. And it was, I think, one of the deadliest trips. I think eight people died on that trip. And he was basically left for dead on the mountain at one point and managed to basically get himself down to a, a camp. And then they still thought that he wasn't worth, didn't think he would survive, so they put him in a tent by himself overnight and kind of left him for dead again. And he woke up the next morning and was still kicking and got down to a lower part and they, his, his, his wife was actually told at one point, was called and told he was dead. And she told the children, and then she found out he was alive. And she did some work around here and she managed somehow with her work through her, down in Texas, got a, a gentleman that flew a helicopter out of Nepal. And it was, they said, there's no way that a helicopter could get up to, even to the point where they were at that point to do a, do a rescue. And he said that, you know, the air is so thin that the helicopter would basically drop out of the sky. And he said he'd be willing to try it. So he went up there and basically hovered over this, you know, piece of ice. And there was another gentleman in that group. And Dr. Weathers said he was in worse shape than he was. And so he insisted that this gentleman go and that he would just stay. And so they left and he thought, well, that's kind of the it. I'm not probably going, I've got this far, now I won't survive. And the helicopter pilot landed, took care of that gentleman and came back a second time and took him off the mountain. So what a story. It was, it was, it was great and just how kind of his inspiration and even though you're having a bad day, that was kind of the gist of it. It doesn't get much worse than the day he had, those days that he had up on that mountain. So very good conference. Laura and I both attended that and they had some, a couple breakout sessions, so we attended different things that day. Then I attended the One Day Baldridge 101 Workshop a week ago today. And I kind of went in to that again as well on, on my report, so I won't get into that in great depth. But there was six of us from the county that did attend. I know Bob had mentioned Ray Lynn went in his place, Kristen, BCOAC went, and then Jenna and Jen from the Finance Office. We all went to that. And it is related to, but not directly a part of the Communities of Excellence, the program that we're in. I mean, Community of Excellence is kind of an offshoot of, of this Baldridge 101 Workshop. And you can, you can read through my report. There's, it was, it was quite the day. A lot of really, really good information. And if you were to go through that process, it would be a months-long process to become, I don't know, you guys can help me out if it's kind of certified with Baldridge Certified. I don't, you know, there's like 270 questions that a business has to answer. And each part of those questions has four pieces to it, so it's not just that. It's, you know, over a thousand questions and, and basically it's all based on, you know, strategic planning and your, your workforce, your employees and the kind of your, I guess what's, I, I, I'm losing, I've kind of lost the word. But then it also deals with like customers and what they think of your business. And it's very good. There's definitely things in there. I think Kristen took a lot away with the BCOAC especially. There's definitely some things, bits and pieces, without going through that entire process that we can pull out and, you know, start looking at using even here at the county level, even without going through the whole process. So I plan on taking a look at that and sitting down with, first, I think that those of us that went and seeing, okay, where do we start with this and, and what can we do and get the word out that way? And then lastly, I attended the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting last Wednesday in Desmet. And I, as part of my staff report, and you probably all received it via email, too, but she handed out the, Chris Jacobson with the SDACC handed out the approved resolutions and policy statements that were approved at the Fall Convention in September. Couple other things, asked, I was asked to discuss broadcasting of meetings. I under, my understanding is that the canvas, a meeting was not broadcasted. Typically, we typically do whenever we're here for sitting here and you have a meeting. That one was just an oversight, so just no moving forward. It is the policy to broadcast those meetings. And Sean did just send me a text and said that we are broadcasting now, so, yeah. So hopefully, I don't know at what point we are, but, but yes. So that is, you know, unless those are just exec sessions, meetings where we're just convening and then moving right in, you know, plan on all meetings being broadcast. A couple other things, the BCOAC Advisory Board was, because it's new, those appointments are also approved here for several of, most of those positions. So we are advertising those positions once again and let the incumbents as well know of that as well and send them an application form. So we're expecting all of those back and we'll get those approved at our next meeting. Um, you, we did receive, the, the board received an invitation from Mary Purpich and about the, Brookings County Democrats holding a party for Spence Holly to thank him for his years of service. She asked that I pass that along. That is going to be next Thursday, November 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the VFW here in town. Also, there is a retirement celebration for Susan Vanderwall. That's next Friday, November 30th. I was asked to pass along that information. And that's going to be out at the BCOAC from 10 until noon. Again, next Friday, November 30th. A few other things coming up. Offices are closed Thursday and Friday this week with Thanksgiving holiday. You can see December 5th, there was an EMS Long-Term Sustainability Meeting at the health system that you received an invitation for. I think maybe all of you received individual invitations for the Brookings Holiday Celebration. That's on Thursday, December 6th at 5 o'clock at McCrory Gardens. And then the last thing I have is, we have scheduled our holiday potluck here at the building. It's going to be Thursday, December 13th, 11:30 to 1:30. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Michael, anything from the state's attorney's office?
Very briefly, you should have received the appointment of a limited deputy state's attorney for Brookings County, Wendy Kleppner, state's attorney from Lake County. And this is for an issue that the office is conflicted out of in terms of prosecution. I wish I had more, but I'll save it for the next meeting.
Thank you. Commission reports. Commissioner Jensen?
On the 6th, after our meeting, we had interviews for highway superintendent. On the 8th, we canvassed the votes and we also did interviews. And on the 13th, we attended the 4H recognition night. It was a great turnout, a lot of people there that evening. Commissioner Miller received an award and a huge thank you for her years of service and commitment to the 4H activities. We talked about earlier, the parking lot, as we left that evening on the north side, it was extremely dark out there. And I, like I said, I talked to the parking rec guys and we'll see if we can figure something out there. On the 14th, went to the 10-county meeting in Desmet. Yesterday, on the 19th, legislative luncheon, which Mr. Owen is always entertaining and informational. We also honored our representatives from Brookings, Spence Holly and Larry Tiedemann for their years of service to the Brookings community. At the end of the meeting, we also participated in a ribbon cutting for the Swiftells' new office area. That's all I have.
On November 6th, I was involved with all of you on the interviews for the highway superintendent and on the 8th, canvassing the votes and another interview. I attended the 4H recognition event. It's always fun to watch those kids get their awards and Sonya brought me to tears. November 14th, I attended the 10-county meeting in Desmet. The area legislators discussed streamlined sales tax, juvenile matters and our meth epidemic. There'll be an updated wage survey coming as well. It came from this, from the First District. On November 15th, I attended the domestic abuse meeting. We had a very long discussion concerning the November 27th Day of Giving. This is something new for our community. And if you do log on and give, you can, you can say where you want your donation to go. Otherwise, it's divided up among several different organizations. On November 19th, I attended the chamber luncheon where they honored Representative Holly and Senator, Senator Tiedemann. And I will miss hearing from David Owen. I love going to, to his legislative stuff because he is so, he's, he's so full of information and so entertaining. That's probably one of the favorite things that I have done as a commissioner. That's all I have.
Yeah, obviously, I was at the November 6th executive session for interviews. And then November 7th, we had the Communities of Excellence that Wednesday, and that was my first meeting. And we're just getting started in that and going through that process. And we were, had some discussions on how we wanted to move forward with all of the entities that are being, are involved. There's a main core that's going to be there all the time. And then we want to reach out to all the entities to see if there's a liaison that wants to be a full-time. We've already done that with myself and then even a backup liaison. But the other entities have not yet. And we're gonna reach out to them and see if that liaison would be interested in showing up to those or would be available for other meetings to go through. So to make it worthwhile for all of the entities that are participating, so they can stay in the know. So that was something we talked about working on there. And then the 8th, we had canvassed the vote in the second session again. The 14th was the commissioners' meeting there, too. And, and they did hand out the draft of our resolutions that will be coming forward, that we're going to be taking forward to the legislature. And so, and that is the ability to raise funds for jails and, and that kind of thing. So I'm guessing we'll be partnering with a lot of different organizations and a lot of different county commissions and communities and stuff like that to try to move that forward and see if we can get that done. And then 15th, we had Growth Partnership Board, which was another good meeting. They just continue to, to plug along. There's a lot of interest. It's just trying to make everything meet is what they're trying to do, so. And then the pre-legislative on the 19th for, you know, the District 7 reps that are retiring. And again, David Owen, there was a lot of stuff that he had, he had a lot of good information for post-election plus what's happening for pre-legislative. So there's a lot of good things going on out there, so.
Well, my report will be rather short. The 6th, I did the interviews with the highway superintendent. And again, on the, the 8th, on the 8th, we did the canvass of election here. Before each awards, I did enjoy their meal and had to leave early before the awards, but did, it looked like it was going to be well-attended. And on the 14th, the 10-county meeting, which everybody has covered pretty intensely. So we'll leave it at that. And then I was gone for a few days, helping somebody not true to do, so. But I made it back for today's meeting. That's, concludes my report.
Thank you. On November 6th, I attended the county planning and zoning meeting. You saw those plans that we worked on. Went to the 4H recognition event with most of the rest of you on the 13th. On the 14th, BEDC had their meeting, at which time they elected new officers for the upcoming year. And we had a report on the Communities of Excellence program. And what was interesting to me, and I'm not sure that I understand the, the relationship, but the Baldridge program apparently generates out of a federal program, which I did not know that, out of a federal government program. And the people that went to Colorado for the training came back and said that many of the entities that are participating in the Communities of Excellence program say that it should take about 10 years to complete the program. It's, it's a long-term commitment to looking at and self-evaluation. So it should be, it should be interesting. And I think it's important that we get as many of our staff involved as possible in that, in that process as we go along. I attended the LEPC meeting out at the BCOAC and, and was just really happy that, that we had a spot where the classroom worked out very well, where we have a place where, when we're having our different kinds of meetings that we participate in, that we can actually host people at the appropriate time. And it just worked out really well. Went to the Chamber Mixer on the 15th and went back to the BCOAC on the 18th for the pumpkin chucking to just watch that. There, the range, I think, the shooting, the pistol range was full. There were people there, there were people at the archery range that were shooting, there were people out in the parking lot throwing the pumpkins. It was really nice. And thank you, Kristen, for the work that you put into that. And it, she's probably right, next year, we should do it before the pumpkins are rock hard. But it was fun. Went to the legislative luncheon with the rest of you on November 19th. And that would be my report. At this time, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2, Subpart 1, Personnel Issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we will be in executive session.